Yes, these are my work friends.
Say hello.
All right, I think Papa's gonna get you. Do you wanna come sit? Do you wanna go back and sit with Dylan and Joe?
Hey there, how are ya?
All right, thank you, Roddy. They're fine, they're gonna come down when Alderman Fisk.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Holmes, Alderman Tindham, Alderman Grover, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Burris, Webber Quorum.
Thank you, first item on the agenda, and welcome everyone to the Monday, May 13th meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is invocations by clergy, First Father Aldershaw.
Let us pray. God, our Creator, light of the world, we ask your blessing as we inaugurate our 79th Evanston City Council. We gather this evening in Thanksgiving as we look back and with great hope as we look forward. I'm reminded of the Gross Point light standing tall at the foot of Central Street that for many years was a beacon for ships, providing safe passage through their shoals along the shore of Lake Michigan. Oh gracious God, for more than 150 years you've been a beacon for this community, this land of the Potawatomi, where the Pony Express stopped at Major Malford's Ten Mile Tavern on the high ridge along the Green Bay Trail, where early settlers met at the log cabin school and preaching place once Henry Clark's land near Greenleaf Street, where Methodist visionaries John Evans, Philo Judson, Orington Lunt, and Clark Hinman seeking to establish an institution of higher learning in the Northwest helped form and fashion this community, and where courageous and compassionate women Frances Willard, Dr. Isabella Garnett, Elizabeth Harbert, Catherine McCullough, and Lorraine Morton in our own day fought for peace and justice and a place at the city's table and at the nation's table as well for all. From Gross Point to Ridgeville to the coming together of the North and South communities to form one town, then one city, you have been present, guiding and inspiring our leaders and all our citizens. We've been blessed by you in this community with a rich diversity of color, language, nationality, Irish, African American, Luxembourg, Polish, Italian, Haitian, and Latino, and with a strong vibrant faith community of synagogues, churches, and mosques. You have blessed us with a business community stretching over many years from Clayton Mark and Tinker Toys to today's Research Park and a mecca of restaurants that have increased and multiplied from Fanny's on Simpson Street and Vera McGowan's downtown in the Dominion Room. You've blessed us with schools and teachers who have enlightened our children and even more have enlightened the eyes of their hearts. And most of all, for the people of Evanston, their community mindedness, initiative, and generosity, and for our leaders who share so generously the gifts of their time and their talents and all that they have, we are indeed grateful. We are grateful as we look back, just as we are hopeful as we look forward. We are hopeful because of those very leaders and because of those very people. So we ask this day that you bless Mayor Tisdale and all our aldermen and all our city government officials, all of them. Bless them with vision and courage and wisdom and compassion as they continue the unfinished business of working for peace and harmony in our community, for violence-free streets and neighborhoods, as they guide and inspire all of us Evanstonians to grow the diversity of this community and make a place at the table for everyone. Like the Gross Point light, may our city council be a beacon for our city, lighting a way of justice, peace, and prosperity for all. Amen.
Thank you, Father Aldershaw. Pastor Ephraim of Ebenezer.
Let us continue in our prayer. God who created the heavens and the earth, you who called order out of chaos, you who called light out of darkness, it is to you that we come tonight. As we come to inaugurate these who have been called to serve in this your community, God, we ask that you would oversee the work of their hands. We ask, God, that you would provide them with wisdom and guidance. We provide, ask, God, that you would give them the direction, just as you have given direction to so many others. God, we ask that as you blow into this place, as you sit amongst them, that you will give them the wisdom to lead only by your power, that they will do what is just and right, God, that they will not be self-serving, but rather they will be concerned about the whole of the community. God, that they won't see black or white, Muslim or Jew, that they will just know that we are all people, and they as individuals will work for the betterment and the growth of this community. God, we call upon you right now to bless, to send your anointing into this place. We ask for peace to resonate throughout this community. We ask for hope, God, longstanding hope. We pray for an end to the suffering, all suffering. God, that we would address every issue in the community, the teenage pregnancy and the homelessness, God, the shootings and the murder. We pray, God, that you will look at the issue of housing in this community, that we will be like one community, that they will come together, that they will lead us. We ask for a special anointing on this, your mayor. God, as she goes about doing all that you have called her to do, I pray that you will reign in this place, I pray that peace will reign in this community, I pray that we will have a new hope, that we will be a new people, that we will learn to love one another, that we will work for justice, that we will be socially justice-minded and focused right here in Evanston, that we will be the beacon of light that you have called us to be. It is in the name of your Son, Jesus, that we ask these things. Amen.
Thank you. Cantor Luck?
Makor HaChaim, source of all life. We humbly ask for your blessings this evening as our devoted community leaders stand together and prepare themselves to be sworn in before the people of Evanston. God, we are forever grateful to you for the many gifts that you have bestowed upon each of us. We are deeply indebted to you for bringing us together in the rich, vibrant, diverse, caring, and blessed community that is the city of Evanston. We also recognize, oh God, that there's much work to be done right here in our own neighborhoods. There are children who go to bed hungry, there are able but unemployed adults desperately looking for work, and right here on our streets, as in the rest of Chicago and throughout our great nation, we have been ravaged by the tyranny of gun violence. Dear God, our need for selflessly devoted and compassionate leadership has never been greater. May you bless our mayor, our city clerk, our township advisor, and all of our council members with the courage, fortitude, and no doubt unlimited energy that it will take to effectively govern this tremendous community. As our leaders work tirelessly in the coming years towards the betterment of our people, shield them beneath the sheltering presence of your everlasting peace. May your unending love assist them in the tremendous task laid before them to serve the people of Evanston with strength, wisdom, and integrity. While the challenge before them is truly monumental, we recognize, oh God, that it is our responsibility to help them as well, as we must all partner together in the sacred work of Tikun Olam, the repairing and healing of the world. This evening, our sacred task begins anew. It could not be more appropriate that this week's swearing-in ceremony coincides with the weekly Torah portion, Naso, in which Moses' brother Aaron, the high priest, and his sons bless the Israelites with the ancient threefold benediction, the oldest documented blessing in our sacred Jewish tradition. So significant and universal is this blessing to Western civilization that ancient inscriptions of it have been discovered dating back some 2,500 years, and it has also been adopted over the centuries by our Christian brothers and sisters. And so, in the spirit of community, in the spirit of brotherhood and sisterhood, and in the spirit of peace, I say unto you who are being sworn in today to serve the people of Evanston. May God bless you and keep you. May the light of God shine upon you and be always gracious unto you. May God lift you, may God embrace you, and may God bless you with that most precious gift, the gift of Shalom, the gift of peace. Kenyirazon be this God's will.
Thank you very much. And now I'd like to call upon the Honorable Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, first, I will have you take the oath of office, okay? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall.
Aye, Elizabeth B. Tisdall.
Having been elected to the office of city mayor.
Having been elected to the office of city mayor.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city mayor to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city mayor to the best of my abilities.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, not only have you sworn to that, but you got to sign now on the dotted line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, for you. Okay, excellent. Okay, Mr. Rodney Green, raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Rodney Green, having been elected to the office of city clerk.
I, Rodney Green, being elected to the office of city clerk.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I solemnly confirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of city clerk to the best of my abilities.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of city clerk to the best of my ability.
That's right. Now you have to sign as well, sir. Okay, and Dar will do it afterwards. Okay, for Mr. Gary Gaspar, where is he? Okay, sir, you raise your right hand, please, and you repeat after me. I, Gary Gaspar.
I, Gary Gaspar.
Having been elected to the office of township supervisor.
Having been elected to the office of township supervisor.
In the town of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the town of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of township supervisor to the best of my abilities.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the supervisor to the best of my abilities.
That's correct. All right, and now you, now you sign. You also have to sign, sir. Okay, thank you. Mr. Gaspar, okay. We have to do what is called the Athenian oath of citizenship, okay? And you repeat after me. We will ever strive for the ideal.
We will ever strive for the ideals.
And sacred things of the city.
And sacred things of the city.
Both alone and with many.
Both alone and with many.
We will unceasingly seek to quicken.
We will unceasingly seek to quicken.
The sense of public duty.
The sense of public duty.
We will revere and obey.
We will revere and obey.
The city's laws.
The city's laws.
And will transmit the city not less but greater.
Will transmit the city not less but greater.
And more beautiful than when it was transmitted to us.
More beautiful than when it was transmitted to us.
All right, beautiful. All right, people. Okay, Madam Mayor, you take over now.
Thank you very much, Judge. Thank you very much, Judge. Yeah, we'll do the oath together. Okay, are you all coming down? All right, you hear the stamp.
Yes.
First, second, and third, okay?
No, this is going to be one at a time. Judy, you're first.
Okay, Alderman Judy Fisk, would you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
All right. I, Judy Fisk.
I, Judy Fisk.
Having been elected to the office of First Ward Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of First Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of First Ward Alderman.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of First Ward Alderman.
To the best of my abilities.
To the very best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, you have to, we wait, and you can all sign them later. All right, Peter?
Yes. Mr. Peter Braithwaite.
Please raise your right hand.
I, Peter Braithwaite.
I, Peter Braithwaite.
Having been elected to the office of Second Ward Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Second Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly, solemn, solemn, solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Yeah, that one too, and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Second Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
And I will faithfully discharge the responsibilities of the Second Ward to the best of my responsibilities.
Abilities.
Melissa Wynn, please raise your right hand.
I, Melissa Wynn, having been elected to the office of Third Ward Alderman.
I, Melissa Wynn, having been elected to the office of Third Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Third Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Third Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Mr. Donald Wilson, raise your right hand.
I, Donald Wilson, having been elected to the office of Fourth Ward Alderman.
I, Donald Wilson, having been elected to the office of Fourth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Fourth Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Fourth Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Ms. Dolores Holmes, would you please raise your right hand?
I, Dolores Holmes, having been elected to the office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
I, Dolores Holmes, having been elected to the position of Fifth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Fifth Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Fifth Ward Alderman to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I, Mark Tendem, having been elected to the office of Sixth Ward Alderman.
I, Mark Tendem, having been elected to the office of Sixth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Sixth Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Sixth Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Jane Grover, please raise your right hand.
I, Jane Grover, having been elected to the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
I, Jane Grover, having been elected to the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Sixth Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Seventh Ward Alderman.
Sorry about that. Oh, you could give her a little. Get a re-write. I, Ann Rainey, having been elected to the office of Eighth Ward Alderman.
I, Ann Rainey, having been elected to the office of Eighth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Eighth Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
And will discharge the duties of the Eighth Ward Alderman to the best of my.
Congratulations.
Dolores, would you please raise your right hand?
Right, left.
I, Colleen Burris, having been elected to the office of Ninth Ward Alderman.
I, Colleen Burris, having been elected to the office of Ninth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will...
What am I doing? Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Ninth Ward Alderman to the best of my abilities.
And will faithfully discharge, faithfully discharge the duties of Ninth Ward Alderman to the best of my ability.
You got it. All right. You all have to sign, and then we have to do a joint Athenian oath. Oh, Colleen, you're gonna need a different one.
I'm gonna need a different one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's okay, you can get it later. You're legal. Well, we're gonna do the Athenian oath as soon as... Yes. All right, Lionel?
Yes, please raise your right hand to the Athenian oath.
All right. We will ever strive for the ideal and sacred things of the city.
We will ever strive for the ideal and sacred things of the city.
Both alone and with many.
Both alone and with many.
We will unceasingly seek to quicken the sense of public duty.
We will unceasingly seek to quicken the sense of public duty.
We will revere and obey the city's laws.
We will revere and obey the city's laws.
And will transmit this city.
And will transmit this city.
Not less, but greater and more beautiful than...
Not less, but greater and more beautiful.
Than when it was transmitted to us.
Than when it was transmitted to us.
Congratulations. Rodney. Oh, do we need pictures?
Thank you.
What about cookies?
All right, I think we are now allowed to go party. Oh, you want a picture? Do, did, you need a picture of everyone? All right. Colleen, we need a picture?